Very formal. Call the meeting to order. I'd like to stand for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
First item, approve the minutes of the prior meetings, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I have a motion to approve the following August fifteen monthly meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the August fifteenth executive session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reading the Congress par- correspondence, we have a letter. Dupont class action settlement. Sorry about that. The Dupont class action settlement, and it says, yeah, I had talked to Matt. Is that, did you put that in today?
Yeah, we got the letter too. The letter's in your pocket.
Oh, good. So, yeah, I actually talked to Matt today. He had called me on another. Such, geez, god, kids. He called me on another subject, but we had talked about this. And we had talked, we all talked about getting on that class action lawsuit. He didn't seem too excited about a timeline, so. If everyone over here is okay, can we get, Matt's working with Ton with it, and I think we probably should get him on it.
What was he, what was he not excited about?
Not excited about like, we hurry up. Like, it's, it's, it's over if you don't get him, but he, he said like, he's working on, on it right now with Ton. And he's trying to find out which orders to go with the law, class action lawsuit, so. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Just say one thing?
Yes.
I think, I think on, there's, there's a timeline to get into that action lawsuit, December.
Oh, okay, 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 thank you.
But you can still go and litigate individually.
So.
Without it.
So let's put Matt on hold. Let's put Matt on hold with them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See which one's better.
Everyone. Motion to have Matt look into the PFAS litigation class action lawsuit.
On behalf of the.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna be appropriate to have the, I will later do it. Financial conditions. So operating budget to actual balance, income for fiscal twenty-four is eight hundred nineteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Expenses are nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and two dollars. Receivables, outstanding water receivables are one hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-six. Months commitments, forty thousand seventy-three. Water receivables, two hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two. I have a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Expenditure warrants, motion to approve expenditure warrants as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, superintendent's report.
We had three total positive samples. And we had to do repeats. The three samples were at fire station, down the street tank, and a raw water treatment plant. And they were positive for total coal form. What we did was we coordinated the tanks, we flushed, and we did repeat samples. And all the samples came back negative, so we're fine with that. And, but we had to do a C T, CR two, level two assessment for total coal form. It was our second trigger within a year. I guess last September, we had a violation of the ninety percentile. And this was over the ninety percentile also, so I completed the assessment level two form, submitted it to the DEP on nine seven, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
And then we have. Highway Department damaged one of our new hydrants on Main Street with their brush cutter. Greg found it, I guess he was walking up and down the street one night, and he found it, they damaged the bonnet. And this operating stem. So I talked to the highway department, they said, the guy said he didn't do it. But I said, that's okay. And if he did, just let us know in the future, so we can put it out of service, get the hydrant out of service. Greg ordered the parts, and he fixed it last week, and so that's back in service. We did, there was a flow test on the transfer station. We had some dirty water complaints in gray terrace, some flushing, cleared up, had a couple complaints over there.
On what terrace?
Gray, gray terrace.
Oh, gray terrace.
Yeah. We had a temporary employee, part timer, Henry, jackknocked the trailer, did a little damage to the truck. Paint on the trailer, no damage. So he ordered an accident report on that, submitted it to us. How it controls why the VFDs, the new VFD, it ripped out, so it's back up and running. And we have an issue with a five twenty-nine Somerset Avenue, requested for a fire line, four inch. It's gonna be a five residential. Slash commercial building, I guess, they're gonna.
Group homes?
Group home, yeah. So our bylaws say that we should put a four inch line in there, this is the bylaws here. That's what you wanna do with that, and that's what we did at the police station, put a four inch line going in. Off of the four inch line, border goes in, they put a one inch domestic. I told him I'd run it by the board and see if that's what they wanted to do. He want, the contractor wants to put a two inch line for fire. I'm gonna go by what the bylaws say, four inch.
Are you totally in favor with all of that?
Would you agree on that?
Okay. You guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's what we'll do with that. And we got some stuff on Main Street, but we have that project under.
Does it have to come up?
Full business.
For filing?
I think there's a fee, right? Four, four inch, four, six, and eight?
Not a cap on it.
Not for fire?
By the line, it might be.
Oh, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, I'll find out when it is, yeah.
I got some stuff on Main Street, but we have that, their whole business, so. It's the commissioner, superintendent's report.
But you can't bring the sheet?
Lost in this mess.
Might have given it to you actually.
Did you?
Oh, yeah.
I have a bit, well, it's, yeah, it's mine, but you can read it.
Oh, we had one more thing, Cedar Three well station, we kept losing power down there, and Gary went down there with the electrician, they straightened it out. So something, just cleaning some equipment and stuff.
Perfect.
Pressure, pressure relief valves and stuff like that. Kinda worked out, gotta work again in the vacuum system. That's the superintendent's report.
Have to make a motion to, right, we can just move on, right? All right, old business. Somerset water Brook Street well update. So. Matt called me today to speak on this, because apparently the lawyer working for Somerset is asking what, what are, what we're doing. So. We should know a little more about PFAS. The second round of them lowering what PFAS is going to be the number. In October, I'm hearing October.
When the state's gonna put it up? The county are gonna say?
That's what I'm hearing, but you know how the state works.
Is it gradual in decrease or like?
No, you know, you never know with the DEP, because they set the. I mean, EPA set it, I don't know if it was forty the first time, and then the DEP said, no, we want twenty. And anything over ten has to stay in the month, whatever it was, and then, now they're going, well, now we want a different number. And the whole buzz is like four or something like that. The buzz around that is like a four.
Right.
And knowing, I believe that well's around a five. Then we're about a seven, something like, something like that. So. Talking to commissioners and everyone here. Would it be prudent for us to spend six million dollars on a well and then have to drop? Without knowing what we'd get in the nation, dropping a few million anyway, at a minimum?
Plus you gotta treat the manganese and iron.
And then, and then, and then have to drop another god knows what here.
No, that definitely changes things.
It kind of does, like, like, ah. So in response to the letter. I mean. I'm okay with getting the well, but are you gonna give us a rebate if we have to build, build?
Right.
A two, three million dollar. GAK, put, you know, GAK, put GAK filters there for god knows how many millions? Are you gonna take that off? I don't know.
Right, because it's no longer usable as is.
They'd love to get rid of it.
The second that number drops, they're not gonna be dumping water in the ground anymore over there. Again, I don't know, I'm sure that will go over, like the proverbial, I won't say it during the meeting, but. It, it's, I mean, to me, it's almost like, yeah, six million, wonderful, you're making out like bandits, we get water. Now we're gonna add another three, say, to that. Take the three off, if it, take whatever cost it is for us to, to ride PFAS, all right, I'll take the well.
But they would have to shut it down anyway, right?
I'm not gonna, I mean, they're contaminating the water over there.
Contaminating us?
Plus.
The groundwater.
You'd have to, the iron and manganese, you have to, you have to treat that first, so we have to bring, would we bring it here?
We don't have to bring it here, so that well has always gone to the system. Up until about five years ago, they stopped using it because it didn't, it didn't mix well with their surface water. And they're having trouble in a high rent district. So they stopped pumping out of that well. I've seen the numbers, Scott can probably get you the numbers, they're pretty good. Iron and manganese, it's not over any action levels. But we could pump that right to the system, unfortunately, the DEP's PFAS numbers.
Yeah, but you gotta get the iron and manganese out before you treat it for PFAS, right? So if there's any iron and.
It's not terrible. You could, you could do resin in a bag filter, which is what we're doing in Easton, we have similar wells. Where we got the, we got the standalone well. And then they have, we have, GAK filters, they're huge, big building, bigger than the well.
Yeah.
By three times. And so they go there, they go into a bag filter, looks like a big pressure cooker. And then it goes through the. The GAC or resin. And you change the filters about every three weeks, I'd say. It's, to just back filters, but that takes any organics out of it. That's what I've been doing. And it, it works pretty good, you just gotta keep on it, you have to, you can tell from pressures and stuff, it's nothing, it's not rocket science. But we have three of them going up in Easton for standalone wells. I mean, they have, they have.
What's if PFAS?
In Easton, depends, three, one of them's like a forty. Another one's like the teens or hitting twenties.
And they're, they're manganese and iron?
Two, two of our stations, they're like point oh six, point, point oh one. Yeah, they're, they're very. They're well, they're not. Anywhere near the level. So Brookstreet, I've seen the numbers, it's good. We could pump that to the system, they didn't even use chlorine, it's not, it's not mandated to use chlorine.
Yeah.
But I.
Well, once you put it through a filter though, you're gonna have to, right?
I would.
I think you gotta.
They're gonna make.
The state's gonna make you do it, yeah.
But anyway.
So Matt needs to get back to them?
What do you want him to say? Are you?
Wait, yeah, wait until the numbers come out, because that changes everything.
It's gonna make a big difference in. Uncost of that well, it's not. If you were gonna hand that to us tomorrow, yeah, we'd have given you a deal because it's a known commodity. But now it has problems.
Yeah, it's losing its value.
Yeah.
Yeah, take half off and, right?
Like, thank, we don't have it. I mean, granted, yeah.
Spend six million dollars, and we're, and we're gonna be stuck on the other end.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah. And nobody, I mean.
Hey, listen, I mean, they shut us out before, right? They didn't make decisions earlier on, so. We gotta wait till we see those numbers.
Good.
I like that.
Not like they're gonna give it to anyone else, sell it to anyone else, like, so it would kinda have them over, you know, well.
Yeah, it's a two-way street.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
They're not gonna budge, we're not gonna budge. It is what it is, it's not, it's not very financially responsible for us to. Throw nine or ten millions, two hundred and fifty down in that well.
I know.
And then it's, you gotta put more into it, the, at the other end later on, right?
Yeah, it's not.
So that'll be a state decision or a federal decision?
As EPA.
The feds?
I think it's an EPA decision, then the DEP does what they want.
Now, why, why can't they give us, we have an interconnection, right?
We do.
Why can't we upgrade the interconnection and buy water often?
We could. We could, the interconnection's not great.
But we'd have to.
Our pressures are like, really much equal. Equal or we're higher or they're higher, it's like, right there, so the only time, we, we actually turned it on one year. And the only time we were able to receive water is when this plant was down. We, we really weren't having.
So we'd have to build this, this station there with a.
You'd have to have some, and there's a, yeah.
It'd be a lot less than six million?
You'd need some, some.
But we'd have the cost of buying it every year.
Exactly.
Well, that's an alternative.
Ton is not really an option because they use chloramines.
Right.
And so they're not a great option, although they do have very good quality water. So again.
We're back to the jar of wood, I guess, I don't know.
We used to buy off in Bedford, and they had chloramines, and we didn't, but now they switched over to chloramines.
We did a study with that, with, was it Wurden Car? It was. And the compatibility was no bueno. And they were like.
Oh, really?
Yep. DEP said, in an emergency, go right ahead. And I said, beside that, not great. They weren't, they weren't overly thrilled with the, with the numbers.
What, ton?
Tons and mixing with us.
Oh, right.
If we were mixing.
Right.
Somerset?
Probably.
They don't use chlorine in Somerset? No.
Well, they, they would be more compatible. Things that, they changed, so much has changed since that.
Plus they want.
Flint, Michigan, so much has changed with compatibility of water. Since Flint, Michigan, they just checked, I mean, our letting copper is a direct result of what happened in Flint, Michigan, the new letting copper. So. There's, no one was stingy on stuff. So you have, did Dartmouth end up going to chloramines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
About three years ago.
They've changed so, I think.
It's not that bad.
What's that?
It's not that bad.
No, not at all.
When we went over to chloramines, we thought it was gonna be a big.
No.
Pretty good. We didn't have many water quality issues at all.
It's not, it's not bad at all, I mean, Ton, obviously, I mean, Dartmouth's huge. So I can't imagine, that's probably was a good move.
So do we need Matt to?
So what do you want?
Something up to them? Like that we're waiting? Until those numbers come out, whether that's October or, yeah.
I don't have to get too in-depth of, are you gonna take?
Right, right, we can just say, we're waiting, we're waiting for the state's numbers.
Because, just the fact that we may have to put another, we don't know how many more. Billions into it.
Right.
So that, good?
Yeah.
Tina, you'll make it sound better.
Have Matt write, we're waiting.
We're just waiting.
I mean, I could do that. Waiting. Oh, gosh. All right, so we did it that. I need to make a.
And Matt's gotta get to him? Get to their lawyer?
Yeah, Matt was under the law.
Well, that's right, I can.
All right, moving along. MIU repair update. Point isn't that slow, okay.
Not getting a great response from the customers, so we're gonna send out some letters, give them thirty days. Get the MIUs chained out, and then, minus, rest of the minus and.
Down to like three hundred?
Yeah, I don't know the exact number on it.
Yeah.
Give it to you?
Yeah.
So send those letters out, and get them, get that going.
Yeah, it's very important. Yeah, this is ridiculous, going on three years now.
Since we started even changing the meetings, I was like.
At least we can get readings now. Good move on the Neptune, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, plus we tried a couple of. Kim in the office, out a few days with injury, she's suffered, so. Been short-staffed a little bit. Last few weeks.
No problem.
Two weeks ago?
Now that thirty day notice, what happens if they don't respond in thirty days?
Thirty days, then you get a registered letter, they're gonna get shut off.
It's in our bylaws, isn't it?
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
It's enough.
Some people are going on two years, two, three years, you said, right? So you gotta put a deadline on it sooner or later, and. You know, don't wanna be the bad guy, but we need to get our readings, and we need to get. An unregistered minus out, Ma, MIUs that are not giving us, and our readings.
Okay.
After they get the letter, when do you go in? Like, they get that registered letter or whatever, when can you go in? Anytime after that?
You give them so many days after registered letter. Say, you register the letter, then you put it, shut off notice on there, tag them, they're gonna be shut off in.
You need to get five days or whatever. You put some paint out there, is a good indication of quality.
Here's another call back.
It only took five minutes?
Start digging around the valve.
Yeah, yeah.
Put some blue paint out there, they always, they always.
Wait the front yard.
But it might take five, ten minutes to change.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not the major, it's just.
Oh, yeah? The process of getting it done.
But there are minus, they rent them off us, so we need to get in there, we need to change our stuff.
Now, you don't have the company doing it anymore, right?
No.
Because Greg did mine.
Yeah, we're doing it calls, sometimes, those days are a lot.
Oh, you won't get a letter then. You won't get a letter then.
Oh, no, Greg did mine, yeah, we could.
Do you wanna offer either some nights or Saturday, I know there's still people saying that they don't get home till six or?
We have a list of like people who needed special, absolutely, we can't say no to that, I don't think, because then, you have to say yes to it.
Right.
Hundred percent.
Right.
We could put that.
Say, yeah, give me every option.
Absolutely. We discussed this years ago, like, yeah. It'd be good to have like three or four.
Yeah.
Give them every option to get it done.
Right. And the last option is, I have to shut you off.
That's about it.
Well, we've been having this discussion for over a year. Almost two years, so. You've been more than patient.
Cool, no crazy. Main Street Waterman Project update, C. Norton requesting that we pay for some contract that paid, and we, we will get the reimbursed. We will get reimbursed at the end of September from the SRF.
Zach said that C. Norton's getting pressure from the paving company, they, they wanna get paid, so C. Norton's asking if we can pay for it out of our funds. And then, the, they'll submit, and we should get the funds back from SRF by the end of September.
Well.
Yeah, we will get back by the end of September. The, the thing you just signed was for the payout.
Right.
For the SRF. They just gotta get it all together, DEP has to approve it, and then they send it off to the SRF, and then usually with.
Can we ask them to finish the paving?
I think it's in, in there for them to do that.
They gotta finish, like, the little crossings too, right? I mean, we'll get paid the next, but.
Well, I think some of it's being held back. Yeah, for that, because it was one seventy-three, but they're only asking for one sixty-four.
Oh, what-de-doo-da. Oh, wonderful, wow. Ninety percent.
It's awesome.
And the first pave coveit wasn't done too well, because so much trailer jumped over it.
Yeah.
So we could, we could say, yeah, we gotta pay you, and we want that a little better than it was.
It's like, finally, I can go down this road.
And then, yeah, no. Did, can you ask C. Norton about them coming in? So we don't have to, because I know we jumped it because the road was so bad, but are they gonna finish the crossings? Just ask him.
Okay.
And I don't know, you guys wanna do that?
Yeah, we can ask Zach, I'll talk to Zach.
Maybe get back to us.
Yeah, that's how it was originally, back when we had the meeting, that they weren't gonna do the coveit until after.
Two. You got the second one dug, I'll go right when we go through. Do you wanna do it now?
Yeah, got it, got it.
All right, so the Main Street first coveit, complete the boring, installation of the sleeve and the piping, waiting on the test routes for the back T and coal form. So they got, they did it, they did the back T and coal form, but they didn't do the, for. They did the HPCs and then for. E. coli. So they're gonna be doing.
When'd they send it? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
So they're gonna do it all over again. And should get those results pretty soon.
All right.
Second coveit, the trenches today was completed. Contract, contractor's scheduling the boring for next week, they're supposed to be here Monday, do the boring and then put the sleeve in. So by the end of the week, I think that should be done.
And then.
One, it takes a few days. And. We've had a lot, some issues with the heavy rains, last night the road was compromised. The center line kinda undermined it. So they couldn't let any buses or any safety vehicles go in, by tag. So they pretty much closed the, the road. And. And pretty much, so.
So basically two more coves.
One and a half coves to go, they go one of the trenching, and the second, the third one, they're gonna go over that one.
Oh. Okay, so. Ask Norton if you can get them in, like, what do you think, next, by the end of next week? They'll be done, right? I don't care about the ones that are going over.
The second one will be done probably by the end of the week.
Okay.
And then the third one, they'll start on the third one, what, what they were trying to do, we, we, we said, well, once you get the first one done, dug out, you can start digging the second one. But that was total disaster, because they had. It was too much for them, they were jumping guys from one to the next one, they were supposed to have two crews. So me and George, the Nichols, put an end to that, we said, one at a time, and that's worked out great. And we've only had like one complaint, and it wasn't really a complaint, it was, I don't know, it was in front of his house, and. Lenny was there, and he said it was no issue.
Right.
He said, the police said it was no issue, so. Besides that, we've been pretty good with complaints, we had one guy complaining for the trucks not having the canopy over, and. But since, besides that, I think we've been pretty good, right?
Was it coveit two? And Paul Reynolds' house? And you had, it was the same day that Verizon was taking poles out, so you had a lot of vehicles, they congested. Again, it's not a big deal, you just tell the cop, tell Verizon to move the truck, or Verizon has to wait a few minutes, that's all, it wasn't like a big, big deal.
Yeah, and the police.
They didn't wanna wait, people wanna already go to work, and.
Yeah.
Sometimes you have to inconvenience.
Five minutes, that's it, they wait five minutes, I've been down there, I've been there, and I've seen the bus go by, and I've spent no issues. At all. And the police have been great with us, the officers are doing all the details have been great, highway's been great with us, anything we need, they've helped us out. Mike Mullins has been good, so. Mike, uh, Mullins has been good, so. It's been good, the rain has been a pain. The rain. So that's, uh, pretty much the.
It's a very fragile, culvert two is very fragile area.
Yeah, it is.
The road, yeah.
Alright.
Oh, we got one thing, and the contracts are moving the hydrant at the top of Main Street, the first hydrant on the right, the thing sitting on the road. They're trying to say that we told them to put it there, but they didn't wanna put it too close to the, the, uh, stone wall that was there, but they're six feet away. I'm like, move it halfway. So they were gonna move it today, but they needed a dig safe, they didn't know if anyone's in the ground. So they're gonna do a dig safe on it and move that and put it, so it's off the road, but somebody's gonna whack that, the police, the fire chief was concerned about it, and I saw it, I'm like. Is this the edge of the road or not? I don't know if they overlaid the, overlaid it too much, you know, cause I wasn't here at initial startup, so. So they, they, they said it might be a change order, but I, I'll talk to them about it, I'm gonna say, come on, guys, you put it right on the road. Puts a hydrant on the road, it's gonna get whacked, definitely.
Yeah.
So we're gonna get rid of that before we have an issue.
Cool. Alright, Cedar One A replacement well update, discuss the need for special meeting. Um, so we're due for September twenty-first at seven P M. So there's gonna be a special meeting to approve. The Cedar One A, not the replacement, cause that was already approved, to approve the extra money. I don't remember how much.
It's like a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So there's some extra expenses because this is taking two and a half years.
So that'd be a special town meeting?
A special district meeting to approve the, the extra funds for the Cedar One A replacement, so.
At D M S?
At Dyden Middle School, yeah. Seven P M, September twenty-first.
September twenty-first?
Uh, do I have a motion to approve the special district meeting warrant to transfer the additional funds for Cedar One replacement well scheduled for September twenty-first at seven P M?
So. Second.
All those are here.
Aye.
Now, Tina, if we do have to go down that road with paying Norton, do we need to tie that to this?
No. No, because that's just coming out of what we have in our general fund, and it's gonna be reimbursed in a couple of years.
Okay, so I don't have to make any special, okay. We'll decide on that to see what Norton says, that's all.
Yeah.
I wanna date when they're coming.
Okay.
Not, ah, next week, no, but when they're done, I want, they need to be here and fix the road, or somebody is going to go up, run out and, and kill them. Okay. That's it. Distribution labor of vacancy. Alright, and, uh, and Ernie's job is routine, is being a packer, so. When are we posting that, is all set?
Just as soon as you said, you agreed, that's okay.
We have a new, or it's not really new, it's about the same, right?
It's com- com- combined, if you, it's pretty much the same. It's wording, wording's a little different. We took out the, uh, C D L. Nobody has a C D L, I don't think.
Messing with, I do.
Couple of little things.
Yeah, they do.
That's the same pretty much, so. I don't, you know, we have any disagreements?
That's good.
Anything?
No, everything seems, um.
Alright, so I would post this and give the union.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, five days, is it seven?
Seven days, we have five business days, so.
Yeah, so, thanks.
We have, we had an open meeting law complaint. The complaint is regards to not stating the date of the prior meeting minutes that were to be approved, and not stating the position or name of the non-union personnel to be discussed in the executive session. Revised agenda was posted and addressed, and addressed the complaint. It has also stated that the board of commissioners must attend a formal open meeting law webinar without delay. The board commissioners, commit, uh, the board of commissioners or its designate must reply in writing within fourteen business days, reply to who?
To the complaint and the state.
Well, I'll designate Tina to reply to the board, and maybe you can look, I guess if we have to, we can look for a webinar for us that we can do on our, our own time.
Yep, it's.
You know, uh, amongst our many other jobs, we'll, we'll get to it.
Okay, I'll email you.
Make sure.
Is that the one that's in here that's highlighted?
Yeah.
That's where you can do the training?
Yeah, and there's different dates that they'll give you.
Different dates?
Yeah, there's different dates that you can.
It's not just an open, I've done these before.
Oh, I've, yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
The last time I looked, it, there were like different dates that you could do, sign up for.
How long does it take?
I'm saying anywhere, so, but I'm not positive.
Tell them I'll get right on it, so it's inside. Alright, good enough. Announcements, uh, next regular meeting commissioner is, uh, tentatively October tenth at six P M. So where will I? Tuesday, right?
Tuesday.
Is the date after tomorrow, is it, I think?
Yes, uh. I should be on.
Good for me, that's good for you.
I should be around, I think. So far, so good. Let you know.
I'll check my, ready the week before.
The day before.
Yeah, I wrote this morning.
Oh, no. Oh, my daughter's practice got canceled or anything. Um, so, uh, also, we have a special district meeting, September, oh, I didn't know, okay. Special district meeting, September twenty-first at seven P M at the Dyden Middle School Cafeteria, obviously discuss Cedar One A, uh, replacement funds, replacement. Public input, Lenny?
Yes, actually, I do, something pretty informative. Last week, um, Congressman Jake Oshinklaas had a meeting, which I attended via Zoom. Cal O'Doherty, representative from the state, and, um, Sean O'Connor. And one of the topics was Pfas. At the M M A meeting in February, I heard from many communities that Pfas was a major issue and an unfounded mandate. Well, Jake Oshinklaas is well aware of it and agrees that something needs to be done, and supports the EPA's request of the law of Pfas. But he also feels the federal government should offer funding, and he's working to have money brought to the state in the form of grant money. However, those grants will be administered by the Commonwealth, so they won't come right to the water district from the feds. It will go to the governor's office, and the governor will set up a program to award money to the various towns. He is going to hold either December or January, a forum, and I'm not sure if it's gonna be in person or Zoom. I'll let you know the date, he would encourage a representative from the water district to attend. It's going to be called the Clean Water Act Forum, but specifically, they're gonna talk about, um, helping communities with the Pfas. No, but whatever it'll be, somewhere between four and twenty.
Sorry, at twenty, sorry.
Right.
When is this again?
Sometime, he, he wasn't, he hadn't set a date, either December or January.
Let, let us know and.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I think Ernie, I mean, not to step out on a limb here, but this is what I, I do every day, I would love to go to this, or listen to this, I don't know if Ernie.
I'd love to.
Oh, it's, it's gonna be open.
Yeah.
Anyone.
Definitely, yeah.
I'll, I'm there, or on the computer or whatever it is.
Sure, okay.
Anything else, you can, anything's great.
No, that, that, that's it, there, there is an issue I'll deal with tomorrow night about Verizon, that's worse like, it's about Main Street. Verizon, they haven't been filling in the holes, and Tom Ferry was kind enough to deal with it. Those are good-sized holes, you can get hurt.
Yeah, I mean, no kid, kids walk like this now.
Right.
Fall right in.
Well, on Main Street.
Adults walk like that.
I know.
They have joggers and walkers, early, early in the morning, so they, you know, it's dark.
Well.
It's dangerous, right?
They're walking on the good side, it just got overlaid, so.
It's a lot to move it. That's funny. So, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to personally thank, uh, today is Kevin's last day of work. And thank you for reminding me. Kevin is a longtime employee for the Brighton Water District, thirty.
Nineteen eighty-seven.
Thirty. Five years? Thirty, no, thirty-six. Thirty-six years, Kevin gave, gave a lot to the district.
What's his last name?
Carpenter.
Yeah, Kevin Carpenter.
So Kevin worked thirty-six years here, and he, Ernie, you didn't have the pleasure of working with Kevin. Very knowledgeable for our district, he, he, and, and also Italian, so he knew everybody, he was. I mean, from, from my perspective, he was very pleasant, uh, a good worker, I enjoyed working with, never, never had an issue with him. Did his job and did it for thirty-six years. Very knowledgeable of our district, and we will sorely miss Kevin. He did a wonderful job, and I wish him all the best in his retirement.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Kevin. And that's, hold up, that's wrapped. Um, we'll now have to go into executive session. Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. So move.
Second.
All of it?